We have one and a half, we have one member missing. Doug Thompson is out this week and we have six of us here. We'll start off with the invocation, Councilmember Right, would you do the invocation for us?
At this council meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values, give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. Above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
Amen. Councilmember Shortle, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and away we go. We are going to go right into reports and presentations and start off with a proclamation. Sharon, you're reading.
Proclamation, Dunwoody Garden Club. Whereas since 1967, the Dunwoody Garden Club has contributed to making Dunwoody a vibrant and beautiful community, and whereas it is with sincere appreciation that the Dunwoody Garden Club be recognizing their signature garden project of beautifying the Peachtree Road entrance to the Leanne Love Town Park at Brook Run. And whereas the club incorporated with Brent Walker, Dunwoody Director of Parks and Recreation, Dunwoody native Scott Luckham, Chief Horticulturist and designer for Hastings Garden Center, established a permanent and updated garden with low maintenance plants utilizing a variety of seasonal color. A water supply was established, was established improvements made to existing signs, bushes and trees trimmed, compost brought in from the Cow County sources, and large lots were purchased and positioned to enhance the entrance to one of the Dunwoody signature parks. And whereas previous garden projects include planting and landscaping contributions of the Dunwoody Library, the Dunwoody High School, the Donaldson Manor Chestnut Farm, the Dunwoody Nature Center, the Butterfly Garden, and the Brook Run Greenhouse, and the Atlanta Botanical Garden, just to name a few. And whereas the updated garden at the Brook Run entrance is an important part of Dunwoody's future, the talented and hardworking Dunwoody Garden Club members deserve recognition and sincere appreciation for their contributions of beautifications for all of our citizens to enjoy. Now therefore I, Mike Davis, Mayor of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia, do hereby thank the Dunwoody Garden Club for your time, leadership talents, and gardening expertise. We look forward to your continued projects that truly help to make Dunwoody a beautiful place to live. Well done, and witness whereof I have here and to set my hand and calls the seal of the City of Dunwoody to be affixed this 27th day of January 2014.
Great, thank you very much, everybody. We're going to have the members come up and get a picture.
I hope so. There'd be plenty of room. Oh, look how cute that is.
You just noticed that?
I just noticed that. I'm sorry.
No, you can say something different.
Yes, I am.
All right, everybody, y'all, you guys all want to be in a picture?
This is the garden club that we are going to have such a good.
Gather around and make a nice picture.
And take a picture right here. You guys all get in? Thank you, everybody. We're going to have a word said and then...
Mayor Davis and council members, on behalf of the Dunwoody Garden Club, thank you for this recognition you have given our club this evening. Back in October, we were asked by Brent Walker, Parks and Recreation Manager, if we would help with the beautification of the main entrance of Brook Run. We gladly accepted the project. We worked hard and in two months, we have almost completed the work. I would like to recognize several people, but they will be sat back down, but they will be standing. First, Brent Walker, who helped us immeasurably. Second, Scott Walker, formerly Head Horticulturist of Hastings Nursery, presently associated with the Pike Nursery, who greatly... Scott graciously prepared and gave us the plan and design pro bono. Third, Joe Gigo, who is Field Operations Manager of Optec Dunwoody, who assisted us... who assisted us in placing of the 15-ton rock that previously had been on Dunwoody Parkway. Our plans for the rock is to make it the centerpiece for the left side of the entrance of the Parkway, to make it to further enhance the entrance. Also, we would like to thank for the rock, Denny Shortle, Michael Smith, and Brent Walker. Bonnie Barton and Mary Dee Shortle, I'd like to thank from the Dunwoody Garden Club. Bonnie is our project manager for this site, and Mary Dee Shortle for all of her great ideas. Most especially, all of the members of the Dunwoody Garden Club for their tireless effort and great enthusiasm. Mayor Davis, we are looking forward to assisting you on further projects, if that's possible, that will beautify our lovely city of Dunwoody. Thank you so very much with this opportunity to you.
We will be calling on you again, Thomas. Thank you very much.
The rock is beautiful.
We're ready. Just wait until it's, just wait till the freeze gets over and it starts coming out again. It'll really be pretty.
If it stops freezing.
All right, move on to item two. Sharon, we have a presentation now? Or is Rebecca going to do it? Rebecca, you're up. This is the presentation of the ARC Gold Green Communities.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Drew and I wanted to present to you the ARC Green Communities Gold Award that we picked up last week at the ARC Board Meeting. Mayor, thanks personally for coming to accept the award. We wanted to, on behalf of the Sustainability Commission, thank you guys for your support and, you know, we couldn't have done it without some of you, some of your policies and the support that you give. Also in your packet, we provided a summary of what we did in 2013. Some of those actions include casual hazardous waste events, electronics recycling, stream cleanups, and so we couldn't have done that without you guys. And looking forward in 2014, we're looking forward to some of the same events, but then also some additional events and programs like a Dreaming Neighborhoods elective challenge for homeowners, different educational events, and some new policies, bicycle parkings, things of that nature. So, on behalf of the Sustainability Commission, again, thank you guys for your support.
All right, thanks. I was, I went down to the ARC for that presentation with Rebecca and Drew, and I'll tell you what, that was a, that was a big deal. Other cities are fighting for bronze and for silver, and we're already at gold after five years of being a city, so that's a pretty big deal. Now we're going to move on to the next proclamation with our sustainable hero. Sharon, you ready?
Proclamation. Whereas the City of Dunwoody Sustainability Commission serves to encourage our community to reduce its environmental impact by providing assistance in public education and outreach of sustainability. And whereas the core of this mission is our commitment to define sustainable practices and to demonstrate them by honoring those who are most dedicated, dedicated to reducing our community's environmental footprint. And whereas the Sustainable Hero of the Year Award is given to one exemplary individual initiated in 2012, recognized by the Commission, Mayor and Council in our city for their dedication, service, and leadership in sustainable development. Whereas Alan Mothner, Executive Director of the Dunwoody Nature Center, has not only been a key leader and educator to the children, families, and adults of all ages who visit Dunwoody Nature Center, but also a vital steward of sustainability and environmental awareness in the greater community. And whereas the Meadow at Dunwoody Park is the heart of the nature center. After two decades of operation, stormwater runoff and solar erosion had deteriorated the site's functionality, which hosts various events and activities throughout the year. Under Alan's leadership, the property was regraded, a tiered rain garden system for stormwater collection was installed, and an observation deck was constructed. An educational window was also fitted into the terrain in order to show the inner workings of the rain garden system. Whereas Alan Mothner, on behalf of the nature center, partnered with the City of Dunwoody to help sponsor an Earth Day paint recycling event in April 2013. The event helped encourage environmentally friendly behavior among residents and supported Atlanta Paint Disposal Commission to produce reusable paint products for community beautification projects, as well as prevented over 1,700 gallons of paint from being added to local landfill. Now therefore I, Michael Davis, Mayor of Dunwoody, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 27th, 2014, as Alan Mothner Day in honor of his service to the City of Dunwoody and the community as the 2013 Sustainable Hero. And witness whereof I have here and to set my hand and calls the seal of the City of Dunwoody to be affixed this 27th day of January 2014.
Bring the family, Alan. Yeah, bring the family. You could have done it without him.
Here.
My wife still has Alan Mothner.
Let's get a picture up here with Alan in the middle and you guys surrounding him. Alan Mothner Day.
It's a nice to put in the date tomorrow.
All right, if you're wondering how to get a day named after you, ask Alan after the meeting. That's a big deal. All right, we'll move on now to recognition of Lieutenant David Barnes. Chief, you're up.
This is Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize a couple of outstanding members of the Dunwoody Police Department. I'd ask Lieutenant David Barnes and Sergeant Jason Dove to come forward. I'm hoping they're here in the back. I'm sure all of you know both Lieutenant Barnes and Sergeant Dove. Lieutenant Barnes, both of them have been with the department since its inception. Lieutenant Barnes has been attending school regularly since we became a city and recently received his Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice from Troy University. Lieutenant Barnes is planning on continuing and getting his graduate degree in the near by future. Sergeant Dove has got his Associate of Science degree in criminal justice from Penn Foster College, and actually, he received this sometime back, and he's continuing to work on his undergraduate degree and should have that hopefully later this year. So I'm excited to recognize both of these outstanding officers from our department who have, who have continued their education and were able to get these degrees, thanks in large part to the council's generosity with the tuition reimbursement. So at this time, I'd like to recognize both of them. I'm sure we have thoroughly embarrassed both of them. I stepped away to, if anyone wants to say anything.
I just want to say, training and education is a huge part of our police department and responsible for many of our successes. And I thank you personally, for me, for your contributions and to our tuition reimbursement and to the department's overall professional training. And I want to leave you with a quick story from my, my mother was bragging that church that I graduated from college and to put it in perspective, her friend asked her in return, what else can I do when I grew up? Fortunately, I don't have an answer.
Still looking.
I've been in law enforcement for 16 years, and since I came to Dunwoody, the chief and the command staff just urged education so important, and it really made me a better supervisor going back to school, and I just wanted to thank for the tuition reimbursement program.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And thank the police department, too. We appreciate the ongoing effort. This is obviously an effort that they do in their spare time, and we, we're more than willing to, to pay for the tuition, but this is all their effort and all their time, and we very much appreciate it, gentlemen. Thank you. All right, let's move on to mayor and council comments. Let's start down at your end, John.
No, sir.
Yes, sir. Very briefly, I'd like to recognize the Boy Scouts who join us to work towards their badges, and tonight we have Tyler Maxwell and Evan Maxwell, who are members of Troop 477 out of Kingswood United Methodist Church, and they are working on citizenship in the community and communications. And I always like to remind people of the tremendous contribution that our scouts make to our community as volunteers for different projects, as well as their Eagle Scout projects, which serve to enhance our different institutions around the city. And so, welcome, Maxwells. Thank you for coming.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to give a thank you, a public thank you, to Amanda Becker and Tracy Mize and the Dunwoody friends of the Children's Healthcare of Atlanta for a fabulous Taste of Dunwoody Saturday night. I don't know how much money was raised for that, but the restaurants of Dunwoody came out to support the community, and I thank those restaurants and businesses and all the volunteers that were part of that. It's a worthy cause for Children's Healthcare, but it was also a worthy call for making Dunwoody a better place. Thank you.
I was down at the legislature this afternoon and sat in on the CAB delegation committee meeting, which was quite interesting and eye-opening, and all I can say is Lee May presented his wish list to the legislature. I don't think there's anything adverse on the face of it to Dunwoody in it, so that's good news. And Fran and Miller and Tom Taylor are doing a good job watching out for our interests up there. That's my comment for the day.
Well, first of all, thanks to all the groups that were recognized tonight. You bring a positive aspect to the City of Dunwoody. Just a couple of things I want to cover. Number one, you know, code enforcement. You know, we don't have a big code enforcement detachment, and in fact, it's a very small one. But code enforcement here in the city is complaint-driven, so, you know, if you've got a complaint about a code enforcement, that's how we get it unless we happen to see it. We had a retreat last Friday, a lot of the stuff came out of it. One of the things I think is of interest is the paving. We've decided 2015 to up the paving from 2.1 to 2.5 million, and the first 2.1 million will be split just the way it is now, 70 for the main thoroughfares, 30 percent for the residential. The additional 400,000 will all go to residential streets. Next, next Wednesday is Walk to School Day, and you can't have too many walkers this school day, so come on out and join us, those of you who live around here. You can eat melon mushroom at 7:15, and we all take off there and go to Austin. If you're in any other school district, please join the kids, walk. It'll be a nice brisk morning. Transparency and getting the information out. You know, the city has an email list. We have 10,000 emails on it right now, and this year, our target is to get at least 2,500 more. I hope we can go above that. But to get on the city email list, all you have to do is to go to our website, dunwoodyga.gov, and under the, under the projects, on the right-hand side, you'll see Dunwoody Award. And just click on there, and you can sign up for email, and you'll get the emails that are sent out from the city PR department. Last thing I talked about, we did a community survey. Initially, I'll be very honest with you, I was against it, but I think it came up with some interesting numbers and statistics, and you can get that by the same thing, going to dunwoodyga.gov, projects list on the right-hand side, as soon as you get on the main page, first item will be survey. Just click on that, and you'll be in business, and you can read the survey, just as it was presented to us on Friday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just to clarify, Danny, 2.5 million dollars were spent, not 2.5 million miles, so in case you guys were wondering.
Did I say that?
As in keeping with, with past practice, I wanted to announce a couple of new restaurants that are coming into town. Novo Pizza is taking over the old Peters Restaurant site over in the Village, and they're a chef-driven pizza restaurant, very popular inside and from there, and now they're venturing out. So hopefully that'll be very popular. Also, Memphis Barbecue, coming from, actually from Memphis, is taking over the Fergan and Griffin location, and they'll be moving in sometime this summer. I think both of us moving in as they do their reconstruction and renovations. So we're excited about these two basically chef-driven restaurants that are coming, and it should work out to be very well, and hopefully you guys will all take advantage of it. And from there, we will move on to public comment. For those of you who are new, and I noticed no one out and get three minutes to speak. I've got a handful of cards here, we go for three minutes. It is a one-way conversation according to law, and it is not a conversation, it's a comment. Three minutes, your name and address, and, and we will start with the first one here. Robert Walker. Name, address, and three minutes, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Wolford, also known as Bob, I live in Georgetown community. This would be an appropriate lead to say the state of our city is strong. However, I'm not going to lie, the state of our city is not as strong as some people might suggest. When, when a citizen or anybody takes an oath of office anywhere in this country to serve publicly, that gives them a certain amount of power and authority. It also gives them, it also invokes on them responsibility. Who takes responsibility for the CAB-to-CAB fiasco? Delays in implementation, cost overruns are bad enough, but the failure of a prompt and efficient transition to our new emergency 911 system puts citizens' lives and property at risk. This is unacceptable, and responsibility must be taken by the person or persons responsible. The lion's share of that responsibility, with, with much forethought, and in my humble opinion, lies clearly with our city manager, Warren Hubmaker. I am joining tonight with former city council member Danny Ross, my, my Dunwoody neighbor, and ask for Warren Hubmaker's resignation, and if it is not tendered, then I request that this council terminate his employment post haste. Thank you.
All right, next name up is Ernie Smith. Name, address, and three minutes, Mr. Smith.
Ernie Smith, I think I've heard of Mark Schumpert, I think. My comment is, I'm going to sound kind of negative about that, for all the positive things we've heard here tonight, but it's to do with the Arts Festival venue. My street is closed completely. I tried to operate business there in 2011. I have six customers all day long. It, it hurts when you're especially in a small business like I am. I have made suggestions to various people that maybe the venue could be moved to, to Brook Run or someplace in the land nature. I was told that parking was not, in other words, they don't have enough parking in that area. My comment was, we don't have parking in the village area either, because the people that are coming in to attend the venue are taking up the parking for shopping centers, merchants there. I talked to several of the merchants, and everyone is very upset, and we were supposed to have other merchants here tonight. I don't know what happened with them, but I think they cowered. Anyway, I'd just like to know if this is going to be, continue to close the streets down in the village area, or is there going to be a chance to move the venue or... Just trying to find out what, what my options are for being open for that, that weekend. It's a, it's a very busy weekend, both for restaurants in that area and for people who are trying to get tidied up for the Mother's Day weekend.
Again, remember, this is a public comment, we're not allowed to respond, so if you're holding for some response, we can't, we can't do that. Next name up is Joe Hirsch. Name, address, and three minutes, Mr. Hirsch.
Hi, it's Joe Hirsch. Of course, I'm not going to give you my address because you know that you're not supposed to ask, there's no, no, nothing on the charter that says you should be asking. It's interesting that no one on the council interrupts the mayor when he does that to try and prevent people from perhaps speaking and try and silence it. It's damning on everyone else on this council as well for not pointing out that the mayor is out of order, for not saying that, "Mr. Mayor, you have no business in asking that." You didn't, you didn't suggest it as a idea, you did as... Now also, I should point out that Mr. Mayor is looking at his iPad right now, now he's looking up. And this is what reminds me of, you know, when you're giving your State of the, State of the City address, I was thinking of, of what happened with the space shuttle tragedy in the eighties, remember with the Space Shuttle Challenger? This city is run very much like NASA was. I look at it as, you know, there's a bunch of people cheerleading and saying, "Bruhah, yah, yah," and then once it's a disaster, everyone looks around and says, "Gee, did anyone seem to tell us or did anyone warn us about the O-rings or the hydrogen leaks?" And there were definitely memos and meetings. But the head people sitting amongst a tight circle were so concerned with trying to give this best image, they refused to listen. They didn't, they didn't want to hear anybody say anything bad or hear anything negative, and they just kept their tight circle and didn't listen to anyone in the public or any of the scientists. So people like you, Mr. Mayor, when, when someone outside of your tight circle, perhaps a drinking buddy, suggests something and you play on your iPad, not only demonstrates rudeness, it also demonstrates what a terrible and horrible leader you are of this city. We're tired of you and your attitude towards not listening to people. And in this example with our city manager, unable to run, something that, remember, a couple of months ago, you stood up here and said, "Well, now that I'm involved, now that I'm involved after two and a half years of this disaster, the vendors are finally listening to us because I went to that meeting and I took care of it." Where were you the last two and a half years? And how come, apparently after two, after that last meeting two months ago, they didn't tell you that things were a disaster? Start pointing some fingers and point them at yourselves as well, Mr. Mayor, because this city is run terribly and not listening and opening your ears and eyes up to what disasters could be pending. If you look back, people knew that disasters were coming, but the leaders refused to listen, and you need to listen, other than just smirking there and making funny faces. And everyone else on the city council needs to listen too, because they're allowing, enabling you to get away with things and not showing any strength in questioning your actions and our city managers. It just, you're the classic example of a terrible leader, and I hope that when you give your State of the City address, you acknowledge many of the city's faults are yours to blame.
Next name up? I'm sorry. Next name up, Danny Ross. Name, address, and three minutes, Mr. Ross.
Danny Ross, 1859 Anthony Hill Court, Dunwoody. I'm not going to speak tonight, I'm going to let somebody else speak before me. We had, I've been speaking with CAB-to-CAB for a long time, and I want you to understand what's happening with my support of us to get this CAB-to-CAB done right.
Thank you. Now, what would be the address of your emergency?
Hello?
What would be the address of your emergency?
This is a 79-year-old lady.
Can you repeat the address to make sure I refer it, please? Repeat the address to make sure I have it correct, please? And what's the phone number you're calling from? And repeat that also to make sure I have it correct, please. And tell me exactly what happened.
Well, this was...
Okay, hang on one moment. Let me get the cab got ambulance for fire dispatch. Hang on one moment for me.
Shortening her breath could be, she's experiencing one of those, that could be one of the causes for this. She said, "I'm going to..."
You've reached the cab emergency 911. Please do not hang up. Your call will be handled by the next available emergency operator.
Voice message number one. She's sitting there. We had a couple waiting for her.
You've reached the cab emergency 911. Please do not hang up. Your call will be handled by the next available emergency operator.
She's still sitting there. A minute and 20 seconds passes. During this time, this operator from Chatcom should have been given the immediate instructions to her to get that part of it done before the cab came online. Also, the cab...
You've reached the cab emergency 911.
Dunwoody Police should have also been dispatched.
Your call will be handled by the next available emergency operator.
It's the third time. One minute and 20 seconds. After one minute was spent, it was possible again. Finally, they're online.
Yeah, this is Chatcom with a medical transfer. She's at 4996 North Peachtree Road.
The Dunwoody Police would never, ever dispatch this scene. They'd not dispatch.
(mumbling) Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Okay, we've gone on for three minutes, but there's two more minutes going on here before the dispatch ever happened. That's five minutes. Four minutes left could have been avoided with CAD-to-CAD. The delay in this was not Chatcom, it was not the cab county, it was the city of Dunwoody and its failure to get this CAD-to-CAD thing done. And I...
Thank you very much.
Right, I was looking for three minutes.
All right, next name up, Tony D'Amici. Name, address, and three minutes, Mr. D'Amici.
Somebody's glasses.
Danny's, maybe?
Somebody forgot his glasses.
Danny's.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sonny D'Amici and I live in the main house. Last time I was here, I served 11 in this building, including all of you, ladies and gentlemen, in an issue related to a food fight between myself and the city administration. We went to court. The mayor was very nice and accommodating. We had the whole court ourselves. Even he attended the court hearing himself. It was an honor. And we got nowhere. There is a post mortem because we did not acquit. Friday, this past Friday, I took it upon myself to file court action with the state court. And I served you, gentlemen and lady, and the rest of you, summons and a copy of the complaints. I suggest very strongly that you read these papers I gave you. Don't pass them on to Lenny. In my opinion, based on my observation of his performance as an assistant city attorney, I don't think he's doing a very good job. I suggest very strongly that you read this paper. The issue here is related over regulation and a lot of fees charged to homeowners. A man by the name Dennis Shortel, few minutes ago, said court enforcements are complaints-driven. If you take a look at the papers I gave you, you'll find this is government-initiated. While I'm here, I would like to be able to present these papers to the mayor. And Sharon, you have to go on. Don't you give it to him? You need to give it to him. You need to give it to him.
Sir, you can deliver the papers to the clerk, please.
Okay. If this is the case, if the city attorney advised that I can give it to the clerk, I will do that. Here they are. The rest are Ted Douglas Thompson and Tom Litania and Kevin McComber. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, there is a summon and I expect you to answer this complaint. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
All right, thank you very much. Next one is Kim Masick. Name, address, and three minutes, Ms. Masick.
Kim Masick. I live at 1421 Holiday Circle. I'm a member of the Argwoods subdivision sandwiched in between the Democratic Nature Center and Argwoods. We shaped this opportunity, we made this council. I was actually in the process of drafting documentation to my District 1 representative, Mr. Shortel. This is a topic that has just come up to my knowledge here in the past few days. It's an issue that the mayor subdivision, Milburn, and all those that live on the riot of way for the Georgia Power power lines and the Colonial Pipeline are very unhappy about. And I'm bringing it to your attention for a plea for, with all of the environmental awards that were going on tonight and the known tree loss, I've been diligently reading Powerco's entire tree conference and trying to form that into my knowledge. And the sustainability and the awards that were given here for becoming a Tree City USA. The policy now for Georgia Power, apparently in the past, it was approved trees that do not grow over a certain height to interact with the high tension power lines. They have changed their policy. They have not notified any residents of this change in policy, nor do they seem to care to want to notify them. They are currently in the process of removing every single tree that is under the power lines. I have pictures of trees that are as high as my dog, as high as my eight-year-old child. They just recently came to my home this afternoon to discuss a person trying to catch more flies with honey than vinegar. Work this out and it's basically, we have the right of way, we can do whatever we want. And I don't see how this is good for Dunwoody. The neighborhoods that put, the houses that butt right up to this right of way, and you're working hard to maintain our environments. I have deer that frequent my backyard. I have barbowels. I have red-tailed hawks that butt up to the nature center. All that's I got, everything. And I just wanted to bring this to your attention. I'm doing everything I can with the Arbers, the Dunwoody homeowners association, the Dunwoody Preservation Trust, the sustainability, Fox News, whatever I can. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. It's not good for Dunwoody. Just give the treats.
Thank you very much. That is the end of public comment. Let us move on to the approval of the meeting agenda.
Second.
Okay, any discussion about that? All right, do I have a, we'll take a vote here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay. All consented, agenda passes. I'm sorry.
No, that was just a meeting.
All right, now the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Move it, Bruce.
Oh, second. Okay, any second. Any more discussion? If you're going to be talking, you have to leave the room. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a second on the consent agenda. Any more discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay. Okay, thank you. All right, any procedural items or unfinished business?
Is it, do you like the comment card?
No.
There will be a comment card coming up. We'll have another comment section. She'll help you. All right, as a matter of fact, if we have any comments, we're taking comments in about 10 seconds.
He's filling it out.
Public comment?
Public comment.
We need to fill another card.
Yeah, fill out another card, purple. All right. All right, I've already asked for procedural items, asked for unfinished business, new business, other business? Anybody?
Nope.
All right, tax amendments?
Yep.
All right, we're all here. Public comment. First card up is David Bailey. Name and address, Mr. Bailey, and three minutes. And again, if you didn't hear the rules, this is basically a one-way conversation. This is not a, we're not allowed to respond back to you. This is public comment.
David Bailey, I'm the Chevron here in Dunwoody. About the Arts Festival, it shuts down that whole road. I'm really surprised there's no more merchants here. It's many people that use my business and talk about the festival and the impact of our business. It just shuts me down and I lose a lot of money. I mean, I have a whole lot to say. I mean, I wish there was somewhere else you could put it. You know, I don't live in Dunwoody. I just own the business for 13 years, so I've been here, so I don't know what alternatives there is, but there's got to be something besides shutting down that main road right there. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. You're welcome. Next card up is Tony D'Amici. Last card. Three minutes, you know the rules.
My name is Sonny D'Amici. I'm back to the issue I just brought your attention. I would like very much, you gentlemen, read the material I have provided to you. You cannot depend on an employee, in that case, a contractor or attorney, to evaluate a serious issue. I hired attorneys before. I read what they write, I check their advice, and I make my own decisions. I had an experience with Mr. Hannigan last time I was here. He was looking up one employee to discuss with him policies. Please read the papers and ask questions. This is a serious issue related to charging many homeowners a lot of fees, millions of dollars to the homeowners who are unjustifiably charged and unsuspectably paying for those fees. This is a tax. Those fees are a tax. People in Dunwoody are not happy about it. Please go on yourself and study what I have found the state court. I'm suing all of you guys, so please take it seriously. Lenny is not the man who will make the decision with you. I recall there was an issue with a man by the name Joe Hirsch and the city of Dunwoody lost. Did Lenny or the attorney at the time pay the cost of the loss that you guys paid for when this issue went to court? I expect you to be much wiser than that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That is all we have for public comment. We move on to, to mayor and council closing comments. Jim, you're in.
A quick one to piggyback on Denny's comment about code enforcement. You know, again, we need folks helping to identify these illegal signs and you can use C-click Fix to do that. And if you don't know what C-click Fix is, you should know about it. It is a great tool to report potholes, signs down, anything that Public Works needs to deal with, and also things that code enforcement needs to deal with. It's on the internet. There are apps for your smartphone and devices and it's a great tool for reporting problems out in the city. And we've got folks in Public Works that track the queue and it's a great way to get stuff fixed. That's the first item. Second, you know, I think all the councils should take to heart what Danny has brought to us tonight with the Chatcom issue. It's pretty obvious that that call could have gone directly to dispatch, you know, very early on in that call, avoided the cab 911 operator and gone straight to a dispatcher with a cab-to-cab transfer. So let's hope that's working quick.
Just a quick word on security. If you read our police reports at all, it's just over and over and over again, folks where we have larceny, breaking into cars, where folks have left computers, cameras, wallets, you name it. Please, I'm sure they're not over in Dunwoody. I'll clarify that. But you folks that don't live in Dunwoody, please don't leave your valuables, because you know, it takes 30 seconds for somebody breaking into your car, take it, and be gone. And that's if they're slow. So please throw all your valuables away, don't have them in sight, and not only that, but you'll allow our police to do a lot of other important things other than just reporting like your car being broken into, which is a pain for you too. So pass that on to your neighbors, please. Thank you.
John.
Yeah, thank you. Warren, what councilman, or former councilman Ross brought to our attention tonight is extremely troubling. In fact, I'm livid to find out that the Dunwoody Police Department did not put a police car in route and I want a full investigation of that. I'd like to get a full recording of that audio from Chatcom and I'd like to know what happened. Billy, I don't know if you have explanations for it tonight, but I think, council, what we heard tonight was troubling. And I'd like to know how that happened, if it did happen as stated, and what we could do to make sure that it doesn't happen again. I'm not sure if you were aware of it. I wasn't aware of it. I don't think anybody here on council was aware of it, but I don't think it is what we signed up for. And I'd like to get a report on that if we could.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Another issue we heard tonight were from two merchants along Chamber of Dunwoody Road that are impacted in a significant way by the Arts Festival. You know, we're a community of trying to find compromise and I know that, Warren, that you and the Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce speaking on the path of businesses are trying to find a solution to this with the Arts Festival promoter. We love having the festival in our downtown area, what we call the downtown area of the village. We have to find a way to not destroy the businesses of those that are affected by the street closure. So I would hope at some point you could let council know in a public meeting where we are with that and to give us an update and any compromise that we can find on that so that we end up with a win-win for the businesses as well as for the community. That would be great. Thank you.
And finally, I echo Jim's and John's comments. I think I always have the impression that anytime we have an emergency like we just heard, that Mr. Ross brought up, that we have a police officer on the way first and then we start figuring out how to get the rest of the, get the rest of the team moving. And that obviously didn't happen. I think we have a serious problem with that. That's a Chatcom issue first and foremost before we can get to the CAD-to-CAD. So I also echo that. With that said...
Mutie Jern.
Okay. Jumped on it. Second. All in favor of Jern?
Aye.
Anybody again?